At this time, I will call the December 2021 Board Meeting for Aridale Stateful Schools into open session. Before I start the meeting, I'd like to read a few comments about the shirts we're wearing tonight. Youth suicides in North Carolina increased more than 50% from 2019 to 2020, according to the latest data from the Child Futility Task Force, which met most recently on December the 6th of 2021. Aridale Stateful Schools continues to take proactive steps to prevent depression and anxiety in our students and create avenues to address these issues. Through the Sandy Hook Promise App, our students can report concerns to themselves or other students who may feel depressed, hopeless, or desire to end their life. This program allows us to provide immediate help to these students. With the help of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, who provided our shirts, and other organizations, we train all adult employees on the signs and symptoms of suicidal behavior and depression, and what to do when they are observed. We provide trained students, assistant personnel, and counselors in all our schools to provide interventions to students in need. Along with the United Way of Aridale County and the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, we also have a strong partnership with Children's Hope Alliance to provide school-based therapy and crisis assessment for students who need it. All schools have a program to help students learn how to express themselves emotionally and how to deal with life stresses. This program meets the North Carolina General Assembly statutes that require social-emotional education in all public schools. Aridale Stateful Schools recently held a suicide prevention town hall. Participants learned the signs of suicide ideation, heard open discussion from parents, students, and professionals, with direct experience with suicide, suicide prevention, and then they all joined in a question-and-answer segment. In November, I'm proud to say, our district rolled out a two-month suicide prevention campaign during the holidays in collaboration with Spectrum Television. This campaign is funded with federal COVID funds. We're very proud of our system's efforts in working to help the prevention of the tragedy of suicides. The shirts we wear tonight show our support for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Our mission is to save lives and bring hope to those impacted by suicide. The message is simple: You're not alone, depression is real, and it can look like many things to many people. Talk saves, period. Suicide prevention line is up on the board, 1-800-273-8255. Thank you. It is our policy to begin our meeting with a moment of silence in which board members, staff, and guests may privately reflect in their own way on the health and welfare of our citizens during this trying time. Most importantly, please pray for our children. I also want to ask you to remember and pray for all our fellow Americans affected by the recent tornadoes in our states just to our west. That devastation is just unbelievable. They need all the help they can get. I also would like for everyone to pray for the family of Robert Emerson. Robert's another one of our employees that passed last week from complications from COVID. Please keep his family in your prayers. At this time, please join me for a moment of silence. At this time, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After recognitions, we'll have our public comments section. Per Policy 2310, signup sheet was put out 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must sign up prior to the start of public comments. Signups after public comments begin are not allowed, per board policy, which has been slightly changed, but time should not exceed 30 minutes unless extended by a majority of the board. Board welcomes our shareholders' views. Please remember, comments should not be slanderous or personal in nature. Board does not respond to public comments. Let it be known, anyone interfering or disrupting this Board of Education, including disrupting our speakers, will be asked to leave the property or possibly charged. Board members and Dr. James, are there any changes to the agenda?
Not as written, Chairman Page.
We did have added personnel. We have an addendum for the personnel. That's all I know of. If no changes, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Got a motion, second, approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to make a statement. Last December, I informed everyone that I would only be Chair for one more year, and I would like to not be Chair my last year on the board. I also announced, actually four years ago, that this would be my last -- I keep calling it a sentence -- but last four years on the board, and that will go off at the next election. But I will not accept if it was even given to me chairmanship anymore. But I'd like to take a few minutes to thank the present and past board members for their confidence in my leadership for the last five and a half years. It's been a pleasure to represent our district and all the 20,000-plus students in Aridale Stateful Schools. I want to thank all the board members for their hard, time-consuming, and usually unappreciated work in leading our system. I'm proud of these individuals, who have different, many different ideas and many different thought processes, but they come together and they always support board-approved decisions, even when they may have voted the other way, and that's the sign of a team, and I do appreciate that. Mostly, I want to thank our 2,700 employees, who are the heart and soul of Aridale Stateful Schools, and some of them right over here, and a few of you out there. Y'all make me so proud and thankful for the opportunity to be a part of the best overall school -- and this is my opinion, but I'll stand by it -- the best school system in North Carolina. We've got the best employees in all positions, and they truly make a difference in our children's lives every day. And I want to challenge our new board leadership and the new board members who will be elected next year to continue to provide positive oversight and leadership, while also trusting our administration and our teachers and all of our employees to make effective choices to carry out board decision and policies, therefore allowing our teachers, our TAs, and all our employees to efficiently do their job of loving, nurturing, and educating our most precious resource, our children. In the future, I hope our system continues to solid improvement and successes that we have enjoyed for many years. I hope the future board continues to get a taxpayer of Aridale County the great return on investment that we have done for the past years. I still say education is the most important investment in economic growth for our area. I'm gonna move and sit, I hope, at the end of the row somewhere for the next 12 months. I'm not going away, and I will continue, and I promise everybody in my district and all our children, I will assure you, I will continue to work for the betterment of Aridale Stateful Schools and our kids. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Jeff James to elect officers.
Thank you, Chairman Page. This time, fellow board members, Chairman, nominations are now open for chairperson for the Aridale Stateful Board of Education, and at this time, I would entertain any nominations for a chairperson.
I would like to nominate Martin Page.
Second.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I've already made that perfectly clear that I'm ready for new leadership. So, thank you, that means a lot, and I appreciate it, but I will have to turn that down.
You can turn it down all you like, but I still nominate you.
Further nominations?
Mr. Superintendent, I nominate Todd Carver for Chairman of the Aridale Stateful Board of Education.
Mr. Superintendent, I move that nominations be closed.
Do I have a second on closing the nominations at this time? Have affirmation that we close nominations at this time, so the two people that have been mentioned are Martin Page and Mr. Carver.
Page has declined, so you can remove his name from the ballot.
I have removed my name from the ballot.
So, we will strike through your name. So, currently on the floor, let's do it by roll call. Let's start with Mr. Howe.
So, just to be real clear, it's an election, so please state the name of the person. The only person that has been nominated is Mr. Carver, so please state his name, not a simple "I" or "nay."
Mr. Shoemaker.
I vote in favor for Mr. Carver for Chairman.
Mr. Kennington.
I vote for Mr. Carver for Chairman.
Mr. Knight.
I vote for Mr. Carver for Chairman.
And Mr. Kelly.
Well, since I can't vote for Mr. Page, I vote for Mr. Carver.
Thank you. So, that's unanimous?
Sure.
Martin? So, yes.
I vote for Todd Carver for Chairman.
Sorry. And Mr. Carver. Mr. Carver has voted for himself, so I believe the count is six for Mr. Carver and one, no. Does that stand correct?
That is accurate, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. All right, so we'll close the nominations out. Congratulations.
Mr. Superintendent, I nominate Charles Kelly to be Vice Chair.
Okay, well, let me open up the voting for Vice Chair. So, nominations are now open for Vice Chair for the Aridale Stateful Board of Education. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair of the Aridale Stateful Board? And I believe Mr. Kennington has said Charles Kelly.
That is correct.
Any further nominations?
Motion that we close the nominations?
Okay, we have a motion, a motion and a second on the floor to close out nominations. So, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Shoemaker.
I vote in favor of Mr. Kelly for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Howe?
I'm in favor of Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kennington.
Yes, Mr. Kelly, Vice Chair.
Mr. Knight.
I vote for Mr. Kelly, Vice Chair.
And Mr. Kelly.
I think I'll vote for Mr. Kelly.
Good. And Mr. Carver?
Yes, I'll vote for Mr. Kelly, Vice Chair.
And Mr. Page?
Vote for Mr. Kelly for Vice Chair.
Okay, at this time, do I have a recommendation to close out the nominations for Vice Chair?
I think we've already done it. We've done it. Dr. James, I will affirm that the vote was unanimous in favor of Mr. Kelly for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Shatler. So, there's our new Vice Chair and Chairman.
You're moving over there. I get to set it at the end of the road.
Wait a minute, way to hold it.
I wanted that end though, because it's close to the bathroom.
You want this chair?
I'd love to sit it in. Good.
So, thank you, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Carver, and so at this time, I'll turn the board meeting over to Mr. Carver, our new Chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. James. We'll move forward then with our consent agenda items for tonight. I had an opportunity to review all this at the Cal meeting last week. Are there any changes to the consent agenda or a motion to adopt it?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the consent agenda.
I second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those, any discussion on the issue at all on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? So, the consent agenda is adopted. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the November 1st, November 8th, and November 19th board meetings. We've had a chance to review these for the past two weeks. Any additional comments or a motion?
Was the approval of the minutes not also in the consent agenda?
It wasn't said.
Separate, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2021 meeting, November 8th, and November 19th.
Motion and a second from Mr. Howe. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So, the motion carries unanimously. No recognitions on the agenda for tonight, the school spotlight. Dr. James?
I'm glad to welcome Chris Grace and a couple students and a teacher from his school, Lake Shore Elementary School, and to tell us a little bit about what's going on at Lake Shore and to hopefully celebrate some of the great things that are going on in our schools.
There we go. Thank you. I was all planned to say Mr. Page, but now I have to remember Mr. Carver, so thank you, Mr. Carver, members of the board, Dr. James, for the opportunity to highlight what Lake Shore has been doing this year. With me, I have two students. This is Sutton Hall and Luke Strom. They are two fifth graders with us, and this is our PTO President Cindy Strom. And if you go to the first slide there, please, no matter what we've done or what we have been doing this year and for the past six years that I've been there, we couldn't do anything without the support of our community and our PTO, our parents, everything that they've done. Just as an example, this year alone, in a two-week fundraising event, they raised over $50,000. I mean, it's an amazing -- it's an amazing place to be with amazing supportive parents, students, and staff as well. So, Ms. Strom, we certainly thank you and all the other members of Lake Shore Elementary. So, the first thing we want to talk about is we are a STEM school. The North Carolina STEM School of Distinction is an honor that we earned a year and a half ago, and a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight are STEM-related opportunities. And we always put those things out there in the community and on Facebook, and the lady from the Make and Impact Foundation contacted us and said, hey, we want to do this program, Drones to Jets. So, what we were able to do is take 23 students that showed an affinity for STEM education and bring them just right here to the Stateville Airport. We highlighted a lot of careers that kids might not know existed. So, Victory Air was on site that day, and they took us into the airplane and took us to the cockpit, showed us mechanics and how flight operations work, and it really sparked a lot of interest in those 23 kids that we brought. One of the things that we're going to do next with them in a couple of months is we're looking at some NASCAR things and some other areas that we can go and highlight some of those careers. One thing that these guys are going to talk about now is our hovercraft project, and if you -- hopefully, you can hear the excitement on this video. That's Mr. Fusco, our Assistant Principal. I'm on the other hovercraft taking the video. So, see if you can press play there and... I promise I won the others, but you can hear the excitement in the background. I mean, those air -- those leaf blowers are loud, and you can hear the kids over the leaf blowers. So, we had 100 students in the gym that day, and they built these hovercrafts. So, Sutton, come on up here, and can you just tell us a little bit about what you guys did that day?
So, what we did is we -- so, we built these hovercrafts, and we used like the -- and once we actually -- when we built them, once we actually did this test project where we stuck our hands underneath the hovercraft, and we got to feel the air coming out of the bottom. And it was actually really fun, because once we did like this competition where we got to -- the students got to push the other students and see how far they could push them and who can get the furthest and win.
Awesome. Luke, did you work by yourself on this, or did you work with a group of kids?
We had gotten to work with other kids, and we had to make a lot of teamwork. There was a lot of talking with the person who came and asked us if there was any people who were bored, and one of the team leaders, I had been, and it was really complicated because we had to figure out if somebody wanted to do this and that, and if they wanted to or didn't get to.
All right, guys, how easy was this to do?
It was not easy at all.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the highlights of STEM education is about perseverance. The kids are going to fail at building things and working together, working with a group of -- I don't know how many were in your -- four or five kids on your team?
Yes.
You're working with four or five kids with four or five different opinions. It's not going to go smoothly every single time, but working through all those problems, that's a big piece of STEM education, so -- and that hovercraft, I would say that was pretty fun, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right, great. One other thing that I'm going to have these guys talk about is responsive classroom. This was an initiative we did a few years ago as an attempt to address our subgroup deficiencies on our state testing, and we found this program, and it really tied in a lot of social-emotional learning. It's designed to build relationships between students. It's designed to build relationships between adults and students, and we started that in the fall of 2019. Obviously, in the spring of 2020, we went home, and I have no doubt in my mind that the effort that our teachers and kids did in that morning meeting kept those kids connected to school when they were at home. So, it's a very strong program. Guys, can you tell me a little bit about what you do on a typical morning meeting day?
Normally, we would ask different questions to our friends, and normally, our teacher would ask, what would be your weekend highlight? And we say that, and then we'll do a fun activity, and normally, when we say good morning, it'll help kids who are new, and you get to talk to new people that you don't normally talk to.
You took my question, Luke. Good job. Sutton, anything to add about morning meeting?
Well, sometimes in morning meeting, we play like this game to like start up our day, and sometimes we play this game Silent Ball, and my favorite part about morning meeting is probably like getting to know everyone when you just joined the school year.
Yeah, we have a lot of new students that enter Lake Shore, so this morning meeting and responsive classroom is an excellent way to invite them into the community. I would say another piece that kind of ties that hovercraft in is it is a school-wide program, and it's very interesting to see -- you can go into one classroom and see something happen. You can go into another classroom in another grade level and see the same thing or the same structure. It's school-wide, we're all talking the same language, so it's a really good whole-school community as well. Guys, talk to us about the dairy farm visit.
The dairy farm was a big truck came with a cow, and they told us all about cows and how they would milk a cow, and some of the cool things that they can do with cows. There are nine different types of cows, I think, and they all produce different sorts of milk.
Is -- are cows a new learning for you, or are you guys familiar with cows?
Some of these facts that I learned, I would have never thought cows could do.
Yeah, you said they can do a lot of different things. I don't know any other than milking them, so I'm interested to hear those.
Can I ask the students something?
Yep.
Did Mr. Grace milk the cow?
No, actually, there was this machine from the -- probably a trained professional. And they use this like machine that they put on the others, and then it like milks out all the milk that they have and puts it into this big jar, and then at the end of the day, they like clean out the entire jar into a bucket and then like make it drinkable milk, probably at like a factory or something.
So, don't do it unless you're a trained professional. There you go.
That's right, trained professionals only. So, STEM education, this is another activity that we did. This is a group of first graders, and their project there was to design a protective case for a pumpkin drop. So, Troutman Fire Department came to the school, raised up on the ladder about 20 or 30 feet and dropped -- gosh, I don't know, there were probably 25 protective pumpkin cases. Some were successful and some were not, but it was a great learning opportunity. It's the engineering process. You know, they try something, they test it out, they try it again if it doesn't work, and that's what we're all about at Lake Shore. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see that we have seven of our first-grade teachers, and just because we have STEM education, we do still incorporate all the fun-themed activities. So, they were all princesses on Halloween, and I'm sure they got lots of candy that day, too. So, and I think we have one more here, and this is a virtual reality headset, and really, Jada, I think you just have to -- it's got a couple of things in there. With the help of Tim Woody and Julie Tipton, we are bringing the CTE program. It's normally a 612 program, and they are asking Tim to bring it into fifth grade, so we were, of course, were like, we're in. I mean, our application asks for our students to talk about and develop career thoughts and have post-secondary education conversations. So, the best part about the virtual reality headset here is this is careers that kids can practice. So, right there, that picture there, our fifth graders today, unfortunately, these two guys, we had a scheduling change, they didn't get to do it today, they're going tomorrow, but these are fifth-grade students. But these are fifth-grade students and they are virtual, in a virtual reality and they are working with different careers. And the next one's actually a, this is a picture of what the kid was seeing that, when I took it. And he was working on changing oil in a car and you can kind of make out the toolbox in the background there. But they simulate a garage. The students can manipulate the little handles. They can take off the drain plug. They can drain the oil. They can refill. They can use tools. They put on safety glasses. And it really exposes the students into a career path because they're going to be picking middle schools pretty soon. And they're going to have to start picking CTE classes and electives. And this is just one more step a little bit earlier. I know when I was in high school, the first time anybody talked to me about a career was, I was a senior in high school and I was sitting in the auditorium and they said, write on a piece of paper what you want to do. And it was a little late. So, you know, the earlier the better. We can get kids in the right, in the right learning paths. But once again, that's just a little bit about what we're doing at Lake Shore and we certainly invite anybody to come down and visit and watch the kids in action. It'll be, it'll be fun.
Chairman Carver, there's actually 28 career paths that the students can explore with the virtual reality sets.
I know everybody was probably thinking the same thing, but it's just so cool to see kids having fun learning. I mean, and that's something we talked about from our summer programs and just making sure that we incorporated that and it looked like, and this is, this is the thing you don't get if you're at home, if you're doing virtual school. Nobody brings a fire truck out and drops 25 pumpkins off of it from 25 feet up. So, so thank you very much for what you're doing and thank you, ma'am, for what you're doing to help support them. Mr. Rogers, if you'll bring forward the sign-up sheet for our public comment period. So board members, it doesn't look like we have but nine people signed up to speak tonight. So I believe that would, if I'm recalling our policy correctly, that would allow three minutes apiece for each of our speakers to come forward. The first speaker that we have is Ms. Nancy Lee.
Good evening, Mr. Carver. Congratulations, Dr. James and ISS Board of Education members. My name is Nancy Lee. Tonight, you voted on surveys of students' policy to allow parents to opt out their child from taking surveys asking protective topic questions. It should have been opt-in. Parents should not have to keep up with email notices requiring them to click on links and answer questions just to make sure their child is not exposed to questions about political beliefs, income, mental, psychological problems, religious beliefs, sexual behaviors, attitudes, et cetera. Instead, it should be mandatory that there is a signature from a parent before a survey is given every single time. That's opt-in. Thankfully, the Education First Alliance for North Carolina is working to get the North Carolina General Assembly to pass legislation making it mandatory that parents opt in for every single survey rather than having a passive opt-out system. Recently, an eighth-grade ISS teacher sent an email to parents telling them their child will participate in a study with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. If they did not want their child to participate in the study activities, they needed to complete an online form to opt out. So now, in addition to surveys, parents need to be concerned if they miss an email like this. In addition to surveys and studies, parents should have had to opt in their child before they were exposed to Panorama Education's social-emotional SEL, Second Steps and Core Programs. Thankfully, we are seeing North Carolina school boards starting to reject these indoctrination programs. On December 6th, the Catawba County Board of Education terminated their contract with Panorama Education and will no longer be presenting SEL programs. In addition, in early December, Beaufort and Carteret County School Districts banned Critical Race Theory, CRT, from their public school curriculum. And parents do realize that SEL is a vehicle for CRT. If ISS believes they cannot terminate their relationship with Panorama Education, then they need to switch it to an opt-in-only permission system for SEL, for studies and for surveys. Parents do not want their students exposed to these programs. And I know many teachers who do not want to teach these programs, but they are afraid to speak up for fear of being fired. Let's get back to teaching our students the basics and not teaching them how to stand up and start movements. Thank you very much and have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next, we have Ms. Lena Grady. Did I pronounce that right? Ms. Grady?
When the green circle comes on, you can push on the microphone. There we go. There we go.
Okay. Good evening and congratulations to you, Todd Carver, and congratulations to you, Mr. Page, on your resignation. You've done a wonderful job. I won't be long. I was wanting to ask the question, what CTR was and if it is in the school system? That's my question.
Ms. Grady, we don't normally comment back to the public. We try to, try our best not to do that. But I will just briefly respond and say it stands for Critical Race Theory and no, at this time, we are not teaching it in our school.
Okay.
Okay? In keeping with the curriculum that the State Department of Public Instruction puts out.
Okay. So why is there so much concern?
So what I would say, Ms. Grady, if you want to stick around a little while, I'll be more than happy to talk to you on a break. And we can do that, but this is, we just, we shouldn't go backward and forth during the public comment period. But I'll be more than happy to talk to you if you'll stick around when, when we go to our first break, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Kevin Johnson?
First of all, I'd like to thank you. The last time, oh, I need as much time as I can get. The last time I was here, I talked to you briefly about subpay and paying teachers for planning and thank you for addressing that and hope that you'll make that a permanent budget light item. Tonight, I'd like to give you a quote. "The needs of the one do not outweigh the needs of the many. Many elementary and middle school classrooms have that one to students who dominate most of the teacher's time." No, these are not students who identify with IEPs and 504s. They're just students who have no skills as far as behaviors and things like that. After the schools have exhausted all of their in-school ways to deal with these quote-unquote discipline problems, whether it be behavior plans, things like that, about the only thing left is expulsion. And I'm here tonight to talk to you maybe about an idea that might address this. We have two, I think for sure, and I know for about one, but I think we have two empty school buildings in the Isle of Statesville, Mountmore and Northview. And at this time, I would like to say that, I would like to talk about letting those schools become what I'm calling individual education opportunity schools. This would be a school where those students could go and have a continued learning experience. At this school, you'd have one-on-ones or maybe one-on-twos where positive behavior could be modeled and reinforced, negative behaviors could be identified and addressed. This would be a fluid placement where these students would come in and they could earn the right to go back or earn the ability to go back to their traditional homeschool if they would opt out. But at the same time, they would stay on grade level. They would also, you would also try to run the school as much as possible as you would a regular school to give them the appropriate social-emotional skills that they might need. And what this might help with is something that this would address, or this might be an avenue to meet the needs of the one, but at the same time, teachers in the traditional homeschools are freed up to address better the needs of the many. Many times, the absence of just one student will change the atmosphere of an entire class. We have not marginalized the needs of the one. The full educational experience and opportunity is still there. However, the many are no longer compromised in their educational environment by the needs of the one. I know this takes money, but if we don't try something soon, this pandemic generation of students, both the one and the many, may never recover. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Doris Allison? Doris Allison? There you go.
I'm on. I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Carver and Mr. Kelly and also to, Mr. Page, you've done a wonderful job. Different ends, different situations. All I'd say that concerning our children, there's a lot of issues going on. Parents, we're not perfect parents, nor are teachers, nor are administrators, but we have to work together concerning suicide. We have lost so many children. 2015, I lost my granddaughter at the age of 15 to suicide. I wanted to find answers. So I felt like the school failed my granddaughter and I felt like we failed our granddaughter. But until we realize the fact that we need each other, until we come together as parents, guardians and work together, we're not going to resolve this issue. We cannot let politics, religion stand in the way because we're losing our children. We cannot let the government teach us how to be parents and how to work together. Because what goes in our homes, we are held accountable and we don't know our children like we think we do. Everything we do affects our children and we got to take responsibility for that. And they're afraid. If they can't talk to us, they need some resources and we got to take responsibility for that, whether we like it or not. Because what goes on at home affects the school. I was so close to my granddaughter, but I couldn't help her. I sat right beside her bed and I was not able to help my granddaughter because she was protecting what was at home. So I'm saying to parents, everyone in here, stop allowing political issues to run your life and save your children and your grandchildren. Let them be the number one factor and work with the schools. We need a safe haven they can go to when they can't come to us. So I'm saying to you right now, please don't be a statistics before you realize the fact that your political views and your religion can't bring your child back. Let's talk. Bring talk to the table. And if you bring talk to the table, you got to take some pain with you. And whatever that pain is and that secret or whatever you're hiding, whatever you don't want to talk about, you don't want to visit the grave. I would give anything to have my granddaughter back. I would deal with any issue. Don't let your pride stand in the way because politics can't love your child and death cannot bring your child back. Work with the schools. This is what I'm saying. School, work with the parents. Never give up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Next, we have Lisa Moser. Yes, ma'am. It's on.
I'm good. Thank you. Dr. James, board. I want to leave you with two words that I'm concerned about, diversity and inclusion. And please don't let words like Critical Race Theory be the reason that all boys and girls of all cultures don't see themselves in their history and also in their future. I was so happy to see the STEM presentation tonight. I was a STEM teacher for many, many years. But I want to bring segregation to you because many of you probably know that there was a time, and I'll give my age, I'm 62-years-old. And when I was a very young child here in Statesville, my older brother, four-years older than me, my older sister, eight-years older than me, would take me with them to the movie theater. It was the only theater in downtown Statesville. And at that time, you could not sit downstairs. My brother and my sister and I would have to go outside the balcony after we paid our ticket and go up the fire escape and we could only sit in the balcony. Occasionally, when we had enough money, we would buy popcorn. We would have to go downstairs to the concession. And there was a rope that went right down the concession. So when I tell you that segregation doesn't have to be a rope right down the middle, we can have segregation with our curriculum, with our academia. We look back on it now and it seems like it was such a long time ago that Morningside School was a segregated school for colored students. I went to that school, only first and second grade, but I went to that school. My sister went to Morningside High School, a segregated school. When I look at some of the history for Statesville, the Billingsley Academy located on South Green Street was established with just a few thousand dollars and it took several years, but it was built in the 19, around 1900. That school was for colored students. So when we look at what we are teaching our students, what we're reaching for, we live in a diverse world. Hard to look back on that segregation, but at one time, that was the land of the law and it seemed reasonable to a lot of people. We look back on it now, it was not reasonable, nor is not having diverse curriculum and academia for every boy, every girl to look and see themselves in their past and also their future.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Mr. Todd Scott?
My name is Todd Scott and I'm the president of the Statesville NAACP. And first thing I'd like to say is, I don't care what other counties are doing. I don't care what Catawba, Rowan is doing. We care about what's going on in the Isle of them. Since I've been coming in here in May, all I've been hearing is a bunch of lies about these masks. Haven't heard nothing today about those four teachers that died. But I heard all these other fake numbers, the masks causing kids suicide. I stood right over there when the camera crews was here and watched somebody coach a kid on what to say up here. Next, I'd like to talk about is what was said up here by this board. Some people on this board is too partisan. They say things to get claps and this should be about these kids and you ought to be ashamed of yourself. And for what you said about the principals falsifying strategies, you should apologize publicly for it. And for somebody, I was told, they're calling Statesville High School football team a bunch of wusses. Those wusses went 12-1 in the fourth round of the playoffs. Should apologize for that. Next to the Moms of Liberty, it's like a lobbyist group. They come in here, we saw what happened right there, about just like January 6th. Hadn't heard too much about that. Bringing that up in here to a school board, making comments on this board political. It should be for those kids. That's why teachers are leaving right now. Because some on this board right here are making these kind of comments. It's shameful. And the next ones that try to follow me home and get my tick, my license plate, better watch out. Other things I want to say about, talk about is, who do y'all work for? You work for the Moms of Liberty? Do you work for these kids and these teachers? From now on, we calling you out. Tired of being quiet. Tired of being quiet. Don't be scared by a bunch of bullies. We seen what that was right there, the bunch of bullies. When we talk, they interrupt us. We tired of it. Next, CRT. The reason why the people don't want it is because they don't want their kids to come home and say, "Mama, why did y'all treat the Indians like that? Why did y'all treat African-Americans like that?" That's the real reason. Has nothing to do with that other stuff. Kids don't mind learning that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Justin Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Justin Cruz, and currently, I am the proud father of seven kids in Iredelle Statesville Schools. I would like to begin first to thank Iredelle County Board of School Board for allowing me to speak tonight. As a parent, one of our chief duties is to assure the safety and the well-being of our children. Without question, COVID has brought about a lot of concerns and uncertainty regarding the best pro--the best--regarding how best to protect our children while creating a sense of normal--of normalcy during an in-normal circumstance. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association, COVID cases among children are extremely high and on the rise. And at last school board's meeting, I sat and listened to an expert give a clear recommendation regarding a mask mandate within our schools, and I was very disappointed with our school board's response and disregard to the expert's recommendation. This type of response is putting our children, faculty, staff, and families at risk. I don't know about you, but I don't like the idea of playing Russian roulette with the well-being of our children, our community, and our family. I can say in this case, I can confidently say this in this case, because earlier this year, my wife and I, we had COVID. My case was a little bit more severe with her. I ended up in the hospital for a week. And I can tell you, being in the hospital, not knowing whether or not I was going to see my beautiful wife or seven kids again, changed my life. It really did. I want to be clear in saying that I am not coming to you this evening based on any political affiliation or agenda. I am here as a concerned parent, committed to doing whatever it takes to ensure the safety and well-being of my children. I understand that there are a lot of unknowns when it comes to COVID, but please, let's start making decisions based on what's best for our children, our teachers, staffs, family, and our community, and not based on what we feel or our political viewpoints. We are only in this together, we are all in this together, and the only way we will get through this is together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Amanda, I can't read the last name, I apologize. Ma'am, just if you would, please state your name for the record, just 'cause I can't read it.
Amanda Van Ass. I'd like to thank the board for letting us come up and hear us out. As a mom, I've got two boys that are within the county, and they're amazing little guys. We did virtual, because in our home, we have my father, who's a four-time cancer survivor, so he's not got the best immune system. My mom doesn't, and my youngest son, he is not able to get vaccinated yet, and he himself has health problems. Not knowing every month whether they're going to be able to be safe in school or not is not only hard for us as parents, but a very unpredictable environment for them as children. They just all want to know that they're on the same page together. Not knowing how it's going to be every month has been difficult for them. It doesn't seem like something that would be, but it is, because they want to see all of us as parents, as board members, as teachers, all coming together to protect them and to protect each other. So they're obviously a little confused. We know that it's hard decisions for you guys, too, but I agree with what the other parents said. We've got to figure out ways to come together. It does affect our children's mental health, whether it's something that's going to endanger them for suicide, or just creating a sense of anxiety and depression that none of us are really prepared for, and the amount of children that it's going to create as this goes on, and we're so divided on our different things, especially things like masks. I had a lot more notes and a lot more points to hit. But I also don't want to take up too much of the time and get off-topic either. So we appreciate your time, and we hope that you will continue to look out for the safety of our children based on as much science and statistics as we can to better understand the spread. And something as simple as wearing a little mask, if that's what's going to help keep all of our kids in school, man, I'll do that all day long. Like, if that's, if it's this tiny little thing is going to help them all be in school, I don't see any reason not to, especially if that means that they don't have to go home, figure out how to do things virtually, and that they can be together. I know my kids, they certainly don't mind if this is, if this is all it means. I mean, my four-year-old can wear a mask. I'm sure that everybody else can, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Mark, or excuse me, Andrew Pfeifer, is that correct, sir?
I appreciate you guys having us up here. I appreciate the work that you do. My wife was the one that just spoke, the more intelligent, prettier one than I, but we felt compelled to come out today because we've been feeling more like we're the silent majority. We have a lot of friends, parents, that have kids in Iredelle Statesville Schools just like us, that don't come out to these meetings, but have been upset about a lot of the things that have come out of it. Most notably, making masks optional. Again, for the reasons Amanda had mentioned, we definitely have our concerns. When we turn our kids over to the schools, the school's the custodian of our kids for the day, and we have to trust what's going on. If things such as contact tracing are not part of the mix, not knowing when and if our kids are going to get sick and why, it's upsetting, and as parents, we feel kind of powerless for anything we can do to combat that when we have to send our kids to school. Virtual's tough, right? I don't think any of us want to go back to virtual school. No offense to those that really like it, but it is very tough for us, especially as working parents. I know providing a high-quality education and safe environment is the mission statement of Iredelle Statesville Schools, and making masks optional and reducing the modes and methods of contact tracing, again, is something that has brought up a lot of concern. As far as a note that was made a little bit earlier, well, and the T-shirts that you're all wearing today, touching on safety for students, there was a note that was brought up, I believe by the first speaker, about having to opt-in instead of opt-out on surveys. Respectfully, I disagree. Reason being, especially if kids don't feel compelled to speak about certain things, such as their mental health, those are the kids that could be overlooked and the kids that could be at risk. So I'd like to respectfully disagree with that first comment. With that, I just wanted to voice my concerns. I appreciate you having us out. I appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate that you guys are looking to keep our kids safe and provide good education. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. So at that time, that concludes our public comment period. That was everyone that was on the list who had stated they would like to speak tonight. So at this time, we've been going for about an hour, so I'm going to say we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll-- Right? Go ahead. Y'all want to go ahead? Okay. All right, then, we'll move ahead with the non-consent agenda. Item number A, Dr. James.
I want to ask Dr. Nutting to come to the podium, and we'll look at our matrix that we came up with for COVID and give you some numbers, and of course, the board will have to entertain a decision on whether we remain mask optional or consider going back mask.
Good evening, Chairman Carver and Dr. James, members of the board. Here this week to give you a COVID update. We did have a COVID update on Monday at the committee of the whole meeting. Jada, the next slide there, as you guys know, every month, we will provide information to you so that you can make an informed decision about masking in the Iredelle Statesville Schools. The North Carolina legislator--legislature does ask that you make this vote every month. Currently, in Iredelle County, the-- Iredelle County is still considered a high-transmission county. Next slide. And so we're going to present to you this information. This is the same information you guys see week after week, month after month, but we'll go ahead and go through this so that you can see where we are. You'll see there that our exclusions did go up in the last week from 333 to 612. So you'll see, just for those of you who are seeing these slides for the first time, the mask mandate started there on September the 7th. The medical mask waivers that had to be signed by doctors started on September the 20th, and then the mask mandate was lifted on November the 9th. So there you'll see, those black lines indicate those big changes in masking and mask waivers and what those numbers look like. Okay, next slide. Positives, students that was in school 48 hours prior to symptoms or to their test. You'll see that since we've shown you this graph in the last week, that number has risen. Next slide. Now, we do break this down by students who are excluded from school based on contact at school, and you see there where that number is steadily rising. Next one, please. These are folks, students that have been excluded from school as a result of community contact. So we've been told by these families that children have been in close contact to someone in their community, perhaps at church or in the neighborhood, and you'll see there, we do divide those numbers out. You'll see there, too, and this isn't, the black line is not on there in this slide, but you'll see that the students that are not excluded due to both people masking, what that means is students get to come to school. So you see how that number was really high when everybody was masking and then not very high when masking is an optional thing. Next slide. This, students isolated with symptoms, as you know, the world has changed a lot in the last couple of years, and it's, if you have certain symptoms, really even mild symptoms, we have to ask those students to isolate. So if you have a fever, or if you have, you know, all these, this long litany of symptoms, we have to exclude those students from school until we know that they do not have COVID. Next slide. Now, this is the matrix that you guys asked us to put together. We did tweak this a lot, and there's been a lot of discussion about this. This data is updated every Tuesday, so you'll see that the rate of positivity in Iredelle County is now up to 10.73%. So in Iredelle County, the percent positivity rate is in the red. The number of positive cases in Iredelle County in the last week is 525. Then the next one has to do with the Iredelle Statesville Schools. Again, the first two have to do with the county, the third one has to do with the Iredelle Statesville Schools. New positives in Iredelle Statesville Schools in the last week, we have had 73 positive cases. You'll see that we do have 751 students who have been excluded from school. That means they cannot come to school because they have been excluded due to being a close contact to someone who has COVID. So as you'll see, a lot fewer, fewer people have COVID. What's really getting us is the six-foot, 15--within-six-feet-for-15-minutes-or-more, where one or the other are unmasked and/or unvaccinated. It just, you know, to explain this, it gets more and more confusing, but there you go, 751 students, and then 365 more students who are not at school because they are isolated with symptoms. Down across the bottom there, individuals exposed but not required to be excluded due to vaccination, antibodies, and/or masking. So there are 202 students or adults, people, that were able to be in school for, you know, several different reasons. Either, number one, they're vaccinated, number two, they have a test from their doctor that indicates that their antibodies are such that they don't have to be excluded, and/or if both individuals are masked. So there is 202 folks in that category. And so with that, that is the data we have for this week. Do we have any questions?
Dr. Nutting, you give us weekly this.
Yes, sir.
And it's a little bit different than the statistics that you were showing up here, if I'm reading it correctly. And I have the last three weeks, starting in November 5th through the 11th, and then November 12th through the 18th, and then December the 3rd through the 9th. And if my math is correct, on November the 5th through the 11th, information that you gave us, there were 154 students excluded from school as a result of close contact within the school. And then on November the 9th, because on November the 9th, the board voted to go optional. The following week, on November the 12th through the 18th, that figure jumped from 154 to 400 students. And then on the week of December the 3rd through December the 9th, that figure jumped to 570 students. So based on those figures, you can see a jump from 154 in a three-week period to 570 students that were excluded from school as a result of close contact within the school. Am I correct?
That is correct, sir. Well, I'm not looking at the numbers, but I think that you're reading it--
And then, the second part is the number of students excluded from school as a result of close contact within the community. And on the 5th through the 11th of November, that was 116. It then went up the following week to 120, and then the last week of December 3rd through the 9th, it went up to 167. So if you add the 570 and 167, you get 731 students that had been excluded during the week of December 3rd through the 9th. And that's an increase from 270 from November the 5th through November the 11th. As you can see, then, that that in itself is a little over 500 students. So if indeed this board says that we want to keep students in school, we're not doing that, because we jumped from 270, I repeat, in November 5th through the 11th information to the December 3rd and December 9th information to 737. You know, so the statistics, I don't care whether you believe, you know, anyone else, but statistics are statistics, and I know people will say, well, you can, you know, tweak them any way, but the numbers you've given us indicate that 737 students last week were excluded from school, which is a dramatic increase. And the only thing that I can attribute that to is, you know, we voted as a board, to make masks optional. So it seems to me that-- know, to make masks optional. So, it seems to me that, you know, certainly, this board should look very closely, if we indeed want to keep kids in school and not exclude them, that we need to look to reinstate the mask requirement. It's because of my belief in that, you know, that I would like to, Mr. Chairman, when it's appropriate, make a motion. Is this an appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion?
Sure, we can continue to have discussion, I believe.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we begin on December the 15th to require masks be worn by our students and staff. And this is to run through February the 15th. I realize we have to vote on this again in our January meeting, but that meeting is January the 13th. So, I put the date of December the 15th through February the 15th. Looking at the number of school days, that's 33 total days, 6 in December, 17 in January, 10 in February. So, that's only 33 days that my motion then would require students to wear a mask. So, Mr. Chairman, my motion once again is to require that students begin wearing masks again on December the 15th. Wear those through February the 15th.
Mr. Kennington's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelly has seconded the motion. Further discussion?
Just one point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. The board will still have to vote.
In January.
In January. And so, there's, obviously, if this motion passes, the board can, in January, move again to affirm a mask-required policy, but the board will still have to vote in January. The January meeting is January 10th, January 10th. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shatley. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know the numbers have gone up. Numbers of being excluded have gone up. And the exclusion, and I was hoping that maybe someone in the county would stand up and say, this toolkit that we're forced to go by is not law, and it gives the person wearing a mask favor, and if you don't wear a mask, it punishes you. And it's not that we have children getting sick, it's that, that these children come to school because they've been exposed, usually by an adult, and because of that, then they sit in close proximity to another student. The exclusion that we're using is unfair. Therefore, I cannot vote for Mr. Kennington's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, right now, we've got 751 kids that are excluded. That's the number provided today. Of those 751, how many of those are sick?
I don't know. I mean, we, 73, 73 positive cases in Iredale County, and, I mean, in Iredale State's full schools, and 751, actually, I will correct you, not students. That is a combination of, on that particular slide, students and adults who have been excluded.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nutting. So, 751 staff and students are out. We don't know how many of those are sick, probably very few, because there's only 73 positive cases, and we've got a number isolated with symptoms of 365. So, my, my point is, the toolkit forces our hand on this, and it's a shame that we've got kids sitting at home right now, have zero symptoms, and cannot come to school. And what is even more frustrating is that this board has zero power to stop that. I wish we did. I wish we could change it, but we can't. That's the frustrating part about it. It breaks my heart that there are kids at Union Grove Elementary right now that can't go to school because of these rules. Are there sick kids at Union Grove? There are. But because of the exclusion rules, the school is virtual. It breaks my heart for the kids at Shepherd that can't go to school, especially this time of year. You know, elementary kids, gosh, you remember, you know, the fun times had around Christmas. It hurts, and I'm frustrated. I wish we could do more.
It's very likely we'll be adding another school to that mix, too.
Mr. Chairman, one more thought. This is the cold and flu season. The flu hasn't gone away. So, if I have a fever as a child, I'm automatically excluded, even though I may or may not have COVID. But I have a fever. So, I could have a common cold. And this is the fallacy in this. I don't deny the science, but I say that the policy is flawed. So, I'm, I would ask that we allow parents to make decisions for their own children. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say I completely agree with Mr. Shoemaker's frustration, and hands being tied, not being able to act. It's, it's, it's not good. And I just want to say I definitely commiserate and understand and share your frustration.
Mr. Chairman, this board has been frustrated for a year and a half now. We've shown our frustration. We've made several resolutions, which aren't worth the paper they're written on. It's about all we can do. And despite what some board members say, Shoemaker's exactly right. These are rules and regulations and general statutes and orders from Department of Health and Human Resources that we legally have to follow. Our lawyers will tell you that. It's, it's what we, it is frustrating, and we're sending way too many kids home. It's not the masks, it's the policies that send them home. But there's nothing we can do but follow them. It is frustrating. I've talked to five principals today, Mr. Kennington, about this situation, and I think Shoemaker, you talked to some. We're in pretty much, we've got a lot of chaos right now at our schools because of this. Every principal I talked to today said, well, they said, well, y'all, y'all put us in this boat by voting to make masks optional. And we did, the board did. And at the time, this board voted the way it felt. It was close, but still, the board made the decision, and I stand by that decision. All five principals I talked to today said, we were going, that, I flat-asked them. I said, back to masks right now. We'll let this ride through Christmas for the next, because if we do it the 15th, we're talking about from that Wednesday, this Wednesday, to the next Wednesday. They said they felt it was going to be more chaos than it was going to be worth, and that most of the damage from Thanksgiving, they felt had, was pretty much already done. And that's what we are seeing a spike from Thanksgiving. I really question what in the world's going to happen over Christmas. I think we should go back to masks, but we didn't listen to principals last time. They asked us to mask. Now, they're saying that they think five days is going to be more chaos than it's worth, that they just want to get out of the next week of school. And so, I, I think we have to listen to them. Mr. Shoemaker, what, the ones you've talked to say?
Mr. Page, they said exactly the same thing, that this short of time left before Christmas, it would be more problematic to try to do it now. My suggestion to the board would be, and this is not a motion, it's discussion, so my suggestion would be, keep masks optional until the Christmas break. We regroup first of January. If we have to call an emergency board meeting, we call it, and we make a decision then.
And?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Page.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would amend my motion to read to require masks beginning on January the 5th through February the 15th, if the second would approve that change.
Since it's been announced, I think we should vote on.
Mr. Shatley?
Motion to amend.
So, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Can you restate your motion?
Mr. Kennington?
My amended motion would be to have required masks beginning January the 5th, which would be the first day returning from Christmas vacation, through February the 15th.
Do I have a second to that amended motion? Mr. Kelly seconds that.
Mr. Chairman, that would, that would be against the state statutes because we're required to vote every month. So, you're, you're covering a two-month period, would it not?
You would still have to vote in January.
Thank you.
I think, I think the point some are missing here. We're talking about trying to keep the kids into the, into schools. You keep the kids, you say you can't do anything. Yeah, you can. You wear a mask. If you wear a mask and they're in contact with somebody else, you don't exclude, or whatever you, word you're using, those kids. They're wearing a mask, and one of them, whatever, they don't, they're not excluded. So, we keep them in school. The second point is, you're trying to get ahead, I know it's a risk. You're trying to get ahead of the tick. The tick is showing up right now. It might be leveling off, but it could be ticking up more at Christmas. If you wait until the next board meeting, that's the 10th, 13th, whatever, of January. So, the kids will have been back into school for two weeks almost before we meet again, unless you call an emergency meeting or whatever. But if you go with the motion as we have it now, and wear the mask starting at the first of the year, then you have at least tried to cover the tick that you think might happen, right on and on, up and up, down and down, whatever, pros and cons, but you're trying to cover that because you don't know. But you're trying, it's what everybody's been saying, you guys need to, well, that's what we're trying to do. If we adopt this motion, then, okay, we get by the five days that our principals are talking about, and we go back to masks at the first of the year. We know we've got two weeks or a month to think about it. You wear the masks at the first of the year and hope that that gets us through the next crisis. That's where we are.
Mr. Carver, the only thing on the floor now is Mr. Kensington's amendment. So, if, certainly, the board is welcome to debate that amendment, but then that amendment will be the next thing.
That we have to approve or, or vote down the amendment.
Correct.
To the motion that he made.
Correct.
Any further discussion on the amendment that Mr. Kennington made to his original motion?
Well, yeah, I would like to make a statement. January 5th is when we come back, and I kind of like Mr. Shoemaker's idea of calling the meeting. We can have Zoom, we can have whatever it takes. We're still in a state of emergency. Because we don't know what it's going to do in the next two weeks. I think, I think on, with Christmas being, Health Department to come out when, after Christmas, and we could get updated numbers early, hopefully by maybe the 3rd of January, and then probably have to have some kind of call meeting. I think we will have to mask at that point. I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm perfectly willing to vote for masks. I voted for masks last time. I, I just, I really want to vote for masks right now, but I'm going to listen to our principals, who believe it's going to be tough to, just off, everybody's just kind of off the charts right now. We just need to try to, hopefully, get by, and I'm afraid we will close a couple of other schools and go virtual.
Well, let's look at this, then. Like one of the parents said, we're not exactly certain about what's happening. If we go in this method, I'm not sure what the board's going to do at the first of the year. They might meet and have an emergency meeting, and they might decide to mask, or they might decide not to mask. If you decide to mask tonight on January the 5th, they know they're going to, they're going to mask at the first of the year. When you come back after Christmas, they know that's what's going to happen. It's going to happen, period. You're going to have it. If you don't, then they have to wait and see whether or not you're going to meet, and whether or not you're going to vote to mask or not. My gosh. Cover the tick so that we've got it covered when the first of the year comes. The parents know, the board knows, everybody knows, the first of the year, because of what we think could happen, maybe, maybe not, we're going to mask.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion on the amendment to the original motion?
Just want to make one thing. Make sure everyone understands, Iredale County is presently a high transmission county. Do you want to explain, please, Dr. Nutting, what that means?
That number, the, the first two metrics, the positivity, positivity rate, and also the number of positive cases in Iredale County, you'll see that, that metric for green, yellow, orange, and red, that matches what the county uses to determine whether or not that is a high transmission rate. And both of those things are in the red. So, we are a high transmission county at 10.73% positivity rate. I mean, yeah, positivity rate. And that number has been rising. And, you know, when you were pointing out the numbers and you were going over those with us, Mr. Kennington, you know, we enter those in every Friday. So, I see those every week and, and type them into the computer. And so, when the county number rises, the number of, of students that have to be excluded from community contact rises. So, it very much, I mean, it has absolute correlation. When the, when the positivity rate in the county goes down, the number of children who have to be excluded as a result of community contact goes down. So, that number has been on the rise for the last three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nutting. Any further discussion on the amendment to Mr. Kennington's original motion?
Board members, all you are voting on is whether to approve.
The amendment.
The amendment. So, to change the main motion from December 15th, start to mask, to January the 5th to start to mask. That's all you're approving.
No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, we do a hand vote? That be all right? We can do that? So, all those who are in favor of amending Mr. Kennington's motion to January the 5th, raise your hand, please. And all those opposed? So, the motion carries 5 to 2 for the amendment to the motion. Now, then, any further discussion on the motion itself?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we do it from February 5th, I'm sorry, January 5th to January 10th, the 10th instead of February, because we're going to have to vote again. We may as well vote at, at that point, because we're going to vote, we're going to have to vote on that day one way or the other.
On January 10th?
Yeah, we, we got to vote. So, you know, I, I would say we, to make, to make it, I'll tell you what, let me, let me do that. Let me say that, to January 14th, which is the end of the first of the quarter, that's the end of the semester. So, I, I would like to, to make the, amend Mr. Kennington's motion from February 15th to January 14th, and that is the end of first semester. And we will have voted on the 10th whether to continue or not.
All right. Can I, do I have a second for that amendment? All right, can I, do I have a second for that amendment? Second by Dr. Knight. Now discussion on the amendment to amend Mr. Kensington's original motion to adopt the mask mandate on January 5th to the 14th now would be the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the attorney a question, please.
Mr. Kensington.
When you withdraw a motion and you, when you amend the motion, that doesn't withdraw the, the original motion?
No.
In other words, my amended motion did not override and do away with the first motion?
Yeah, it did, but that.
Why do we have to then come back and vote on the first motion again?
You're not, you're voting on the amended main motion. So just like you're, basically, I know it feels like you're approving it twice, but once you have, once you vote on the amendment, all the board did was approve to amend the language of the main motion.
Okay.
And so now you must vote on the main motion. Now, of course, prior to getting to debate or take your vote on the amended main motion, Mr. Page has offered a second amendment by amending the second date, the, the end date of your main motion from February the something, 15th to January the 14th. And so that's been seconded and that's being debated. I hope that explains it.
And let's just say hypothetically, his motion carries. So then what do we do? Do we vote on my amended motion again, or do we go back to my original motion?
You would vote on the main motion, which has now been amended two times, assuming if Mr. Page's amendment carries.
Right.
And so that main motion, again, assuming if Mr. Page's amendment carries, would be masks required from January the 5th to January the 14th. If Mr. Page's amendment doesn't carry by majority of the board, you would then just go back and vote on the amended main motion, which has only been amended one time, which changed the start date of your main motion, but not the end date.
And that's why you get paid the big bucks. Thank you.
Well, we're really just trying to challenge Todd today on his very first day, his chairman.
I'm getting carsick, I can tell you that right now. So any further discussion on Mr. Page's amendment to the original motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I think I understand the reasoning behind Mr. Page's amendment. He is looking at this as a stopgap measure until the board meets again and when we can have solid data again to make a decision at our next board meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Page?
Yes, sir, and that takes us through the first semester. The 14th is the last day of semester. So that gives us a good point. We, we will have to vote on the 10th, that is law. So what are we voting on if we go ahead and, I mean, we, we're going to have to vote to continue it or not, so we got to vote. So if we've got it through the 14th, in my opinion, it'll be, then we will vote to continue it past the 14th or not.
Would keep us from having to come back and having a?
Yeah, it would keep us from having to have a call meeting.
And it would give parents and students and staff some clarity now instead of waiting.
Correct, as Mr. Kelly had suggested.
Well, I will say tonight that, and I've said it before, I think the mask mandate is, is not effective at stopping COVID. I think it is a necessary thing we have to do because of the, the way the quarantine or exclusion rules are written. So I'm torn, but I'm inclined to support Mr. Page's amendment to the main motion in light of that. And then we group, regroup first of January, look at the new data, and, you know, I'll go back to Union Grove, that's in the district I serve, and those kids not being at school. And it's not because there's a huge number of kids that are sick, it's because of the quarantine rules. And I don't like the game, but we're forced to play it.
Further discussion?
Uh, Dr. Nutting, am I correct in saying that after Christmas holidays, all our students will be able to come back to school?
Unless they have tested positive for COVID, or they have been exposed within the community, or they have symptoms.
Right. And, and in other words, I'm, I'm looking for all the excluded children that we have now, they'll all be back in school after Christmas?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless they're still sick.
Right, okay, thank you.
Another reason, after talking with the three high school principals today, their concerns are exams, which are that week of the 11th, 12th, 13th. And so if they're masked, they, their, their big fear is losing a lot of students to exclusions early in January that would exclude them from Bennett Tech exams. So that was, that was, you know, they are concerned about that time being after Christmas. But anyway.
Further discussion, Dr. Knight or Mr. Kelly? Hearing none, then we'll move forward with the vote on the amended.
On whether to amend.
On whether or not to amend Mr. Kensington's original motion to require masks between January 5th and January 14th. Let's go ahead and do this a hand vote, so we don't even have to redo it. All those in favor signify by saying aye to amend the motion. All opposed? So the amendment to change the motion then to require masking between January 5th and January 14th has passed, so now we need to vote the motion up or down as it stands from January 5th to January the 14th.
Correct.
Any further discussion on the motion?
On January the 10th, we will have to vote regardless again on what we're going to do.
Correct.
On January the 11th forward. Is that correct?
Partially. You, you're going to have to, you have to vote at least once a month. You, you all have typically done that at your regular board meeting. You certainly could always have a special called meeting to do it if you didn't want to do it on the 10th. But yes, you're going to vote on the 10th most likely. But on the 10th, you could change it on the 11th, but you could also change it on the 15th, or whatever school day follows the 14th, if that's a Friday, if that makes sense. So you could say, we'll go mask optional on January the 21st if that's what you wanted. So just that one point of clarification.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do a hand vote on this also, then. The motion is to require masking between January the 5th and January the 14th. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Couldn't tell for sure, but was that six to one? Six to one, so the motion carries then for our monthly discussion about masking. So at this time, then we will take a 10-minute break for restrooms, and we'll start back at about 10 till.[1079.26]
All right, Dr. James, we're gonna get started back, try to get out of here before nine o'clock. So, moving on to item B, 2022 and 2023 school calendars, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Chairman Carver and Dr. James and the school board. So, we are here tonight, hopefully to get an approval on the 2223 school calendar. So, as district admin, we do recommend option A, which comes with 182 student days and begins on August the 10th. This calendar is what the school board requested and supported up until about last week. We were asked to bring a calendar that we would end the semester in December. Option A aligns with all three of our early colleges, Mitchell Community College, as well as Mooresville Graded, which is the first in probably history. As well, many of our days, workdays will align with the MB Mills innovative calendar. Option A will save money because of staff and with staff and transportation when we all have the same workdays. Option A is best for our students for completing exams prior to the Christmas break. Students that are beginning college in January must end their classes early. They don't get their full instruction. They have to take exams early so that they can graduate in December so they can begin college in January. These students do not get the full course before they graduate. Yes, option A does not follow the calendar law as written by our legislators down there in Raleigh. But if we as a school system is to do what's best for our students academically and not lose two days of instruction, which equals 13 hours, and that would be the difference between A and B, then going against this law shouldn't matter if we as a district want to continue to do the great things that we are doing right now. And so I, as the creator of option A, we hope that you will vote for option A.
Mr. Chairman, I know what I said at the Cal meeting, and I've done some soul searching over the last week. And I have to decide, what am I here for? I'm here for the students. And option A does help students. Now, some guys sometime ago named Jefferson and Adams went against the king. So, I guess this little school board member can go against the governor. Now, I might warn the board that they may, and I say they, the Department of Public Instruction may come back to us and say, "We're not paying for your superintendent. What are you gonna do?" So, you know, that could happen. But I will support A, and let's see what happens. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. James, how would you like it if your salary wasn't paid?
Well, I would work about five minutes into that new day and tell you adios.
Thank you. So, I agree, Ms. Elliott, and thank you for your hard work. Option A is best, what is what is best for students. However, the general statute is the general statute. And I think it sends a bad message to the community and to our students that just because it's a law we don't like, that we're not gonna follow it. And again, let me reiterate, I think that option A is the best for our kids. But there's a lot of laws I don't like, but I follow them. I don't particularly think that the seatbelt law should be primary enforcement. Does it save lives? Absolutely. But, you know, it's one I don't care for. But I follow it. I wear my seatbelt because I want to be safe. So...
I do know that in 2019, 2020, when we went with that innovative calendar and we started really early, we did receive a letter from DPI. They did not withhold any salary. I do know, in speaking to Mooresville Graded, who started August the 3rd this school year, that they received a letter. There was no withholding of salary.
Well, with all due respect, and please don't take this to be disrespectful to you all, Ms. Elliott, trying to think of a way to say this and be polite, but I really don't care what Mooresville does. I know it's great that if we can align with them, I understand that's a positive. I just struggle with voting for a calendar that doesn't go along with the general statute.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Schumaker, and I will not, I would vote for calendar option B. But I would like to see us possibly have the other board members say which they would prefer, and then possibly not even vote on B formally tonight, but ask that maybe it go back to the principals and teachers for some input to see if there's anything that can make B better. But I will not vote for A.
Okay, so let's talk about B for a little bit, because if we are going to follow the calendar law, then we have to start on August the 29th. That you see that we are very limited with what we can play with within those two dates. Dr. James, when he started, he wants as many instructional days as possible. So, going from August the 29th up until June 9th, which is the latest that we could go, we have four workdays in that whole year. That's all we have. We have spring break, and we have an Easter break. So, and we have our Thanksgiving break. So, there's not a lot of wiggle room, unfortunately, when you follow the law. There's no wiggle room. So...
I would just say, Chairman Carver, this is another example of when the state dictates to local education authorities what they can and cannot do. So, I will at least speak towards the exclusion rules. We have tried to get the calendar law changed amongst us and probably another 60 or 70 districts to no avail. I believe we were, there were 14 districts that did quote unquote, I was told by Senator Went Rogue. And Aridale States was one of those, and then the General Assembly come back and tightened up the calendar laws. So, there was a gray area that the 14 counties that did start early used, and those gray areas were then legislated out. And again, when it goes to contact tracing, et cetera, all those are laws that I keep, that we keep addressing with our state, with Ms. Sawyer, we've talked to, with Phil Berger's office, we've talked to Governor Cooper. And again, continuing to say, it's not a static situation. The data, you guys have spoke tonight, the data shows less than 10% of our kids are getting COVID inside of our school buildings, so the exclusion rules are the problem, not kids getting sick. The calendar is a problem. How do we know that we're not gonna start sometime in September next year? So, we keep taking local education authority and getting it smaller and smaller to where if we're gonna legislate everything, there's no use for a local board. If everything's gonna come out of Raleigh, then just go ahead and tell us each year what we need to do, and then we don't even have to have a board meeting. And that's what's being done to us, and I'm frustrated, because I can tell you, I have fought a long, hard fight with the powers that be at Raleigh, with the governor's office, trying to get things changed for what's best for kids. So, it's apparent with this calendar law that here we go, here we go with another one. So, where's it gonna stop? So, it's the toolkit, now it's the calendar law, you know, are we gonna start at Christmas next year? I mean, at some point, we have to stand up as 116 school systems and say, "It's our calendar, it's our local boards, it's our kids." And again, I know some of you are running tonight, and I'll share the 700 pages of general statute with you if you want to come, one of you coming by my office, that we're dictated to do. Almost everything that we do as a local education authority is dictated to us by the state. And if we have a little wiggle room and take it, guess what? Somebody figures it out and closes that door for us next year. So, again, there are 658 pages of law that we are required to comply with, and that's just 115C, general statute 115C. If you're bored, you can go read it like I do and live by it, but that's just one of many things we're required to do. And this is just another shot from the state to take local control away. And this calendar is ridiculous. We can't do a professional development for teachers. They're already stressed out, and we just keep making it more and more difficult to be an educator in the state, and I'll be quiet.
Further comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is, again, just a, you're right, Dr. James. Raleigh needs to just run the school systems. We need not have a local school board if that's the way it's gonna be. You know, it's, this is totally ridiculous. Now, my fear is through the history of the last few years, Aridale State's schools has by far probably bucked Raleigh and the general statutes. And this is the general, this is the General Assembly we're dealing with. This is not the governor's office, not the department, not the state board. This is just straight the General Assembly, mainly Senator Berger. The House has had many bills to change the calendar law and allow local boards to set their calendar. It does not get heard. Senator Berger has said many times he will not allow it to even go to the Senate for discussion. Now, Senator Berger does not send us Christmas cards. He may send you one, Jeff. I don't think he does. He certainly doesn't send this board. We were the only system when we went along with Surrey County, and it's interesting, Surrey County is actually in Senator Berger's district, a few years ago, when we found a loophole. And we were the largest county that used the loophole in our innovative calendar, and we found a legal loophole. So, we went for it. And we were the only district, we had a parent go to Raleigh and meet with the Senate and House leadership complaining about us and trying to stop what we were doing. We were the only system of the 14 that went with the innovative calendar. They got a letter from Raleigh, because we had a parent go down there and raise immortal Cain, and you guys know the parent, at least Brian does. Oh, yeah, you do. Anyway, so... And that caused us some heartburn. And ever since then, and then we have sent them resolution after resolution, going against what they're saying and telling them to do this or do that. We are not exactly well-liked, especially by the Senate. And in some cases, we have put our wonderful Senator, Ms. Sawyer, who does a marvelous job, and I talked with her on a regular basis. I talked with a House rep again today, talked with him on a regular basis. Now, that'll be your job, Mr. Carver. And I know you met with two of them last week also. So, the feeling is if several districts do this, that when they come back in January, they will do something this year to make sure that we suffer the consequences. That kind of bothers me. I know our, the rocky relationship we already have. There's no doubt A is by far what's best, until we get all you, the people here, to get on a bus and go to Raleigh, and we'll provide you the bus, and we can get people from the other counties. I'd like to ask our attorney, what's the chances of us getting a, and you represent other districts? Let's get this to a judge. What's our chances?
My thought would be that you wouldn't win because you didn't follow the statute.
Do what?
You would, I don't think you would win because you didn't...
But I'm talking about to go, get, try to get a stay from the statutes because of it being so damaging to children. If we got, I mean, class action lawsuit, which...
I don't necessarily, I mean, just off the top of my head, I don't think that would necessarily be successful. I will tell you what would potentially be successful is if you choose option A and a one parent, not a group of parents, one parent decides to sue you to make you follow the calendar law.
They will be successful.
A likely, high likelihood of success.
And we've already had that, so that's one of my hesitations for going with A. But if we do B and a parent sues, they got no case.
Correct.
Because that's the general statute.
Correct. And the general statute, and I think we talked about this at the council meeting, the general statute, it doesn't tell us exactly what date to start. It says the closest Monday to the, to the, what is it, 26th? Thank you. And so this year, that's about as late as it will ever be.
It is the latest possible date, and then I think that's about the earliest date on the ending, and squeezes us from both sides.
Yeah, so it is, I mean, regardless of what you think about the calendar law, this is the worst year of it. So, it's doubly, so if you think it's a bad thing, it's doubly bad this year because of that just factor of just the way the dates line.
And Senator Berger's made it clear he don't care. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly? You're the last one.
Oh, is everybody else medical?
I believe so. Didn't everybody, oh, did you get?
Comment.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, and Dr. No.
Yeah, just give me a sec. I, A is best for the kids. I think it's best for the teachers, best for the system, and it works out best logistically to get everything done that we need to get done. I think it's really good work that you've done on A. Unfortunately, the law is what it is, and I, you can't, you're not supposed to selectively... And if you break the law, you gotta be ready to face the consequences. And that's, I don't, so if we did, would vote for that, I would, I think there's, in this political climate, I do think there would be consequences that, and unfortunately, I'll have to vote for B. But I wish I could vote for A.
Mr. Kelly?
I can't even begin to remember how many times we've talked about the calendar. And it always has come down to this. Do you start early? Do you start late? Do you start when? Do you start, when does the first semester end? Can you coincide those dates with the other people in your area? I mean, we went through a lot of time in which we were in one system, our kids were in another system, and the dates never coincided. There, it never did. I know what we've gotten from the state. I've heard what we've gotten from the state. We continue to get these edicts from the state. It is like Dr. James says, they continue to eat away more and more of the local in which you might not need the local within a very few years, and that could be a pro and a con. At this time, and like the last time we were here, when she was up in front of us, we outlined, and she just outlined again, all the pros that are for option A. It's better for the kids. They finish before Christmas. They finish the first semester. It coincides with those kids that want to go to college in the second semester. They're finished with high school, and they can go into the second semester next door if they want to at Mitchell. If they're in the early college, it coincides better with everybody's schedule. If they have any relationships whatsoever with anybody in Mooresville, it coincides with their schedule. Now, all of those things are very educationally sound. I've always thought that the seven people that are here are responsible for the best education that we can muster for the kids of this county. I don't see any pluses whatsoever with option B. I'll end it with one other thing. If we vote for option B, then everybody in the state of North Carolina, and Raleigh included, is gonna say, "Ah, well, we did it. Okay, they did. We told them to do that, and they did it. No problem. Go away." But if you vote for option A, you might have somebody down there that says, "Oh, wait a minute. Wait, whoa, whoa, hold it. Maybe we need to look at this one more time. Maybe not this year, maybe not next year. And don't threaten me with his salary. We can take it out of the chairman's salary."
Sure.
You know, no problem. Okay? So, option A to me, I mean, if there are ramifications, let me hear them. We talked five years ago about wearing stripes. We did that. Well, we don't want to do that, but this is a better option. This is what we have come up with. This is what is better for our kids. It's better for the system. It's better educationally. It is very educationally sound. I'll put, I'll vote for A and let...
Mr. Chairman, one other quick comment, please, if I may. Mr. Shatley, what does the oath of office for an elected official to the school board say about following general statutes?
I don't have the wording right in front of me, but the oath of office that all office holders in the state of North Carolina does state that you will uphold the laws and the Constitution of the state of North Carolina and the United States of America.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, I agree with everything you said, and I appreciate your passion for what you said. I have no argument at all with what you've stated. I just can't vote to break the law, because that's what we're doing. It sends a terrible message to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
It meant a lot to me to have to put my hand on a Bible and say that. So, I agree with you.
So, my comment on this is that A just simply doesn't follow the law. Had a teacher email, I think she emailed the whole board this last week and wanted to know why it was that we did it two years ago and we don't have the fortitude to do it now. And the fact of that is, as it's been stated, it's the year-round calendar law. And the fact of that is, as it's been stated, the year-round calendar law has been clarified, the law has been changed, and that come to us from our General Assembly, not from a king, but from our General Assembly. And that if we disagree with the law, our recourse is to work to change the law. I realize we've been working for a long time to change the law. There's a lot of things in our system of government that took a long time to get changed. That doesn't mean you stop trying to get it changed. As Mr. Schumaker says, if I disagree with this law, what's the law's next? Is it the employment law? Is it, you know, some other law? I don't think we should have to have an attorney sitting in the room with us, you know, the lights are too bright. I mean, there's any number of things that we could call on next. Our oath is to uphold the law and to the best of our ability. So, I would ask the superintendent to help us prepare a resolution for our January board meeting to send to our legislative delegation, asking them to once again, please, take this issue up. I urge you as parents to please take this issue up, contact your representatives, please tell them that you are dissatisfied, because that's the right way to go about this problem. All that being said, no further discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that it, we've, the motion is to eliminate calendar A due to the fact that it is illegal, and to tentatively approve B on the condition that it be sent and all the rules sent to our principals, and then have, so the principals can review with staff to see if there's any adjustments that could be done to make this a better calendar. And then the principals report back to Ms. Elliott if they have any changes, and this be brought back to us in January.
Does that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I second it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Ms. Elliott, I'm sorry. We asked you to do a calendar, I think out of wants, and you worked very hard at it, and I'm sorry that-
I can't wait to see what the principals tell me that I can change.
Well, I don't think you can change much, but we, we've had a lot of teachers ask that, and I've told them, look, there was, there was a, a calendar committee had teachers on it, but we have in the past sent it out to them, and we didn't do that this year. So, out of respect, I don't think there's anything it can be. I want you to send them the rules. I want them to read all the crazy rules that you have to go by.
Glad to read them right now?
No, no, we don't want to be here till 10 o'clock.
I know, I know.
I mean, I want them to read, I keep, you know, they're all talking about what, this, that, or the other. I want them to read the rules and then come back and tell us what, what can you change? You can't. I mean, it's tough.
All right, so I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the legislature, excuse me, is going to convene this January. Would we be correct in tabling this until then because of the, the chance that it could be, or, you know, I don't know. But I, I mean, if they come back and say, okay, we're gonna let you start earlier, I guarantee you, you're gonna want to start earlier. So, I don't know.
I think my motion basically tables it till January, but it gives our teachers a chance to review it. But I, I don't, I'm asking our legislators to try to talk them into changing it to the, at least, Monday before the 26th instead of after. If they would do that, that would give us another week, which would help us tremendously. That may be a possibility, but I, I don't think, I don't think it'd get heard at all.
You're probably right, but I'd like to give them an opportunity.
So, we'll know more about whether they'll, in, by 13th of January, we'll have a feeling from our legislators about- So, we did introduce our, we did introduce two separate bills. One was Senate, one was House, and they both went to the Rules Committee, and they died a slow death there. So, we did have two put in on our behalf by both Mr. McNeely and by Ms. Sawyer, and both of them died a slow death in the Rules Committee.
Mr. Page's motion doesn't approve B, it just submits B to staff and administration and faculty for comments, and then you all would have to approve that calendar on, in January or February. It doesn't have to be done in January. But if something, if the legislature does something different, even a small tweak, such as allowing you to start the Monday before the 29th, you could still approve that at a later date, so.
Any further discussion or comments?
Just one more comment for me. So, you know how I like to have a calendar in January approved because we like to get the next year set up so we can start registering our high school kiddos in February? So, let's don't, if we're gonna push it to January, that's fine, but let's don't push it any further because we know that those folks in Raleigh are not gonna change anything, so.
Sad but true. Any further discussion? Here, no further discussion. Mr. Page's motion is to eliminate calendar A and send calendar B back for further consideration, come back to our January meeting. Am I stating that right?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, I believe that was six to one, if I'm correct. Mr. Howe? Thank you. Ms. Elliott. Next, we have Use of Presley School, Dr., Mr. Tim Ivey.
Chairman Carver, fellow board members, Dr. James, I'd like to discuss with you two options for the Use of Presley after we move Presley over to Northview School. Option one would be to move the DPAS program and the EC department to Presley, and option two would be to move all of the departments that are currently housed at ADR to Presley until we can finalize plans for consolidation of central services.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve option two.
I have a motion from Mr. Kennington, a second from Mr. Howe. Further discussion?
This is the motion that the Facilities Committee recommended to the full board.
Mr. Ivey, just further clarification, is that you said the anticipated cost of the move, is that really the same for option one or two? They're roughly the same, no matter?
Actually, this is an anticipated cost based off of what we allocated to move Presley to Northview. We do anticipate that option one would cost more, but until we actually plan it out, we would not know what ADA compliance would be.
Okay.
Option two may be a little less. It really will depend on, once you get involved in the actual moving process, but I do not anticipate that it would exceed that amount of money to relocate those offices, especially if we're going to continue our discussions we've been having about consolidating of central services.
Outstanding. Any further discussion on Mr. Kennington's motion?
In clarification, that anticipated cost is $250,000. So, put that on the record. I do want to say, one of our speakers today spoke about the use of Northview for a specific learning center, what we would call an alternative school, and that's already been approved and is well under, well in way that Northview will be used as an alternative school for some of our children to have issues. So, that is what's freeing up Presley. So, thank you.
And Mr. Ivey, I assume that this, if it's approved tonight, will begin immediately? Is that correct?
We will begin planning immediately. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Kennington's motion to approve option two signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ivey, you also have the Facilities Management Express contract.
Yes, at our COW meeting, we were asked to break this out separately, and so I'm bringing to you a request to go into a contract with Facilities Management Express to have them come to the school district to do a facilities condition assessment. The cost is $462,438. What they will be doing is going over through our entire system, asset tagging, all of our items, including our plumbing, HVAC, electrical. They'll be doing a roofing assessment and provide us with preventative maintenance plan that'll allow us to keep our systems running more effectively through longer future use, as well as being able to do capital forecasting. It will set us up in something that'll allow us to move from a reactive maintenance to more of a preventative maintenance so that we can hopefully get ahead, be able to not wait until the roof leaks before we then decide to repair it, but we're on a schedule, be able to use our taxpayer dollars a little differently than we have in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. This is something we discussed at the COW meeting last week, and we discussed it several months ago as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we accept the Facilities Management Express contract. This was, that's my motion. We discussed this with the county commissioners, and they were very much for it.
I have a motion from Mr. Page. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kelly. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, when we talked about this two months ago, I supported it, and I still do. The asset tagging is important, and I think it's a cost savings measure in the future. And Mr. Ivey, I think you and I spoke about this already, but I would just make sure that any new assets are tagged and will they keep up with it, because if we don't, as soon as the survey is done, it's out of date. So, I know we talked about that already, just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Ivey a question from the standpoint of a better use of the $462,000. Could we not hire a crew as employees of the system much cheaper to do the asset tagging and the rest of this and save some money?
We could not. As we've looked into this, and what you're finding is, because we use FMX for our current work order system, and we also use it for our facility's use, we're actually getting the best money for our buck for this due to the fact that they'll actually take all of our as-built maps and lay out every single item that we have on it. So, when somebody goes into a building, they need to know exactly where the water main is or where the HVAC system is. They're putting that all into our system. It would cost us quite a bit more to go to outside vendors and have them do that.
But my question is inside employees, if we could hire additional employees in the department that could do this?
I don't think they could do it within the timeframe that we would end up with. So, by the time they're able to do this largest scope of work, we're talking quite some time. I mean, they're gonna send in a very large team to be able to complete this project. So, I wouldn't be able to give you an actual estimate of would it be cheaper. I know that it would take a substantially longer period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Any further discussion?
Let me ask, too, when you say they're going to assess the materials that we have and put it into the system, what system is that?
That is our work order system, which is, we run through FMX, and it provides us with all sorts of analytic information about our, and how everything's running, how fast our work orders are being calculated. It tells us how much our labor expenses are. It's how, last week, I was able to tell you how much money we're spending on the upkeep of ADR and Ray Street.
Okay, but if I'm not mistaken, companies that do this also means that every item is tagged, and every item, like you're saying, is tagged with the date, the update, the maintenance, and everything. And if it gets lost, that's also a part of that system, right? I mean, if it gets, if it gets lost, if it gets broken, if it gets and needs to be replaced, it immediately shows up so we know it's coming. Is that not, that is a part of this system?
It tells you everything about what's happening with your facility. So, when an item has to be repaired, the tech comes in, scans it, it goes right into the system. You can see the life history of any unit in the system.
And like Mr. Schumaker says, it has to be ongoing, because I'm thinking that everybody that's looking at this at this time is thinking that this is not a one-shot deal, this is a beginning, and when it starts, every item must be maintained from now added for an item.
Yes, that is correct. You have somebody come in and do it at first, and then it changes the processes of how you do everything moving forward.
Okay.
And that would be done in-house at that point?
Absolutely. Part of this is they will show us how to asset tag, they'll take some of our guys out with them, and so we have to replace a part on a unit, they're gonna add that into the system. So, when I want to know what's going on at a certain school, I can pull it up and see the history of that unit, how many times it's been repaired, what's the preventative maintenance been completed on it. It actually notifies you of everything, and I can provide you guys, once it's completed, some phenomenal reports.
You have to realize, this is covering plumbing systems, HVAC, and electrical and roofing. It's not like a million tools or anything. It actually covers-
The big stuff, all the big stuff, right?
The big stuff, absolutely. Like, you know-
That's what I'm assuming, is that everything is tagged, and if we, if it's tagged and done when they complete this, and we keep it updated, we're not gonna have to spend this kind of money again to catch it back up.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here, no further discussion. All those in favor of accepting Mr. Page's motion to accept the Facilities Management Express contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Six to one. Mr. Kennington? Next, moving on to our policy, proposed policies.
Oh, you haven't moved my amendment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's the quickest thing we do tonight.
That is correct. I was gonna move you to the end, but that's, no.
I'll be here regardless. So, following the approval of the contract that Mr. Ivey just presented, this would be the amendment to the budget to fund that project. It is being funded by some additional funds that the county has allocated to the school system for capital outlays specifically. So, this amendment should mirror the cost of that particular contract that you just approved.
And this was discussed at the COW meeting. Any further, any questions for Ms. White on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Agenda Item 7E to the capital outlay budget.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Mr. Kelly to approve the capital outlay budget amendment. Any further discussion on this issue? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Six to one. Again, Mr. Kennington opposes the amendment, or the motion. Next, moving on to our policies, proposed policies. Dr. James, you have the first one, Policy 4720.
So, the first one, legal staff and I had this conversation, of course, it was brought up tonight about surveys. We didn't have a survey policy. So, we're asking you to adopt this policy. It does, I think, address some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier tonight, but I will tell you that all of our federal programs, you're required to do surveys of students, and of course, the amount of that survey data, the qualitative data is used to help us pull down federal dollars, et cetera, for reintroducing lunch, while it's a form, is really a survey. So, this policy is one that's typically used across the state, and I think our legal counsel also helps 29 or 30 other districts. So, our concern was, we didn't have a policy in place, so it, I'm not sure that we were doing things very consistently. So, by adopting this policy, then we'll put some procedures in place to address some of the concerns that we heard earlier tonight before we do send the survey out. I personally would like every parent to know what survey we're sending out and what the, you know, what the purpose of the survey is for and what we do with the data. And of course, with Title Ones, Title Two, Title Three, and those programs, we're required to do that anyway. And one of the things that we're wearing tonight, it's, you know, it's through survey data and through, here's something- data and through Hear Something, Say Something, or the app that we use. We communicate with students to help prevent suicide. So, there is a youth risk and behavior assessment that is typically given in each district, and that data is, you know, tabulated to try to help with funding for programs like suicide prevention, et cetera. So, survey data does have a big part to play in a lot of the federal money we pull down. And, of course, if approved tonight, then I'll move forward with leadership to develop some procedures on how we communicate surveys in the future, to make sure parents have an ample opportunity to opt out if they choose not to. And I would like to send the surveys home where all possible. But this survey actually protects certain categories that we will not give out. And again, we didn't have a policy, so I feel much better about adopting a policy and having some guidelines to go by in the future. And then, of course, would welcome community input on surveys that we give, and then so we can have further discussion and make sure that they fit our community. So, thank you.
So, this is a second reading for this policy, so then we're to either adopt or turn down this policy at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept this survey policy?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Howell. Any further discussion on the policy?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
If we, this may be for you or for the attorney, if we, if the policy is adopted and we find that there are loopholes or things we want to close or make changes to it at a later date because something happened unintended consequences, we do have that right going forward, correct?
You have that absolutely right.
Thank you.
I think we could adopt any policy or amend any policies we saw fit going forward.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Kelly's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Six to one. Mr. Schumaker opposed the motion. Moving on to Ms. Cooper and Mr. Ribick.
Could I make a, propose a question here?
Sure.
These are all second readings. So, I mean, unless you have some type of responses that we haven't been aware of, that we did not discuss in our COW meeting, could we not adopt these policies as a whole that Mr. Cooper and Mr. Ribick have?
Yes.
And the policies that Mr. Armstrong has?
Yes.
So, I could make a motion that we accept Policies 2 through 4, 5 through 17?
You could make that motion?
Yes.
Make a motion?
My second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question, and I'm not sure to whom that should be directed, on Policy 4400, attendance. In reading that policy, and I know over a period of months, we've talked about consequences for the students that violate the attendance policy and their ability to participate in extracurricular activities. I think Mr. Howell has spoken at length about that, and it referenced in here to go to Policy 4300, student behavior policies. And under that, it says, "Each school should create a student behavior management plan that will elaborate further processes for addressing student misbehavior and the use of intervention strategies and consequences." And my question to the staff would be, in the attendance policy, the consequences, I'm not real sure what they are. And if it is referred back to the principals, and each school has different policies within their school under their code of student conduct, then we could be dealing with policies from 37 different schools. But I'm looking more at extracurricular activities at the middle school and at the high school. I would like to see a policy that talks about attendance and discipline in way of how one participates in extracurricular activities. And that does, Mr. Howell, include the athletics. I'm just real concerned that it's up to, excuse me, it's up to each school to come up with their code of conduct, student conduct. Am I wrong in what I'm saying, Mr. Armstrong? Or is there a uniform policy for the system?
Yes, for attendance, for years, Our Dell Stateful Schools has been under the 85% attendance rule. So, a student, athlete, grade six through 12, they must be in attendance 85% of the previous semester to be athletically eligible for athletics.
All right, what about other curricular activities? Whether that be cheerleading, whether that be band, chorus, any extracurricular activity?
I can speak with cheer, cheer team through athletics, but...
Band and chorus are classes, or classes.
Yeah, okay.
They're not extracurricular. We don't traditionally view band and chorus as an extracurricular activity because that's part of a class. So, attendance at a band and chorus event is part of a class grade.
What about something like, I'm sorry, something like Odyssey of the Mind, or like an academic competition? What would be the policy there?
We try to follow athletics.
Okay, so we, in the past, we've tried to follow the 85% rule on attendance. Discipline, if you are in school suspension or out of school suspension, you're suspended from play at that time. If you're not in school for any reason, not in a regular class, you will not be allowed to participate in athletics or special, or extracurricular activities.
So, that's a system policy?
Yes, sir.
And so, that is clearly spelled out in each school's, then, code of student conduct?
If, if not, we can add that, too. I just, I just had a conversation probably about a month ago with our executive cabinet on discipline and participation. And so, it is clarified with athletics. We did clarify, if you're not in school, in class, then you will not participate. Because we, we were, some schools were doing their own version of, you know, what they thought that should be, so we clarified that.
So, we don't need to revisit and/or create a new policy?
No, sir.
To deal with the code of student conduct to make sure that they are equal among each of the middle and high schools?
And, Mr. Kennington, what we can do, though, is add that to our current student code of conduct. We could add it to that.
So, you can bring us a revised policy for our consideration?
Yes.
That's what I would be asking, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, to piggyback on what Mr. Kennington has said, Ms. Cooper and Mr. Ribick, when you presented this, 4400, I made a comment that, and I can't find it, but there were specific rules that said if you, if you don't, if you're in violation of the attendance policy, this is what's going to happen. And I, I wanted that to be left in, and I can't find it now. Is it still in there?
Yeah, it's in the green here. The student will not receive a passing grade for the semester, the student's grade will be reduced, the student will receive a grade otherwise earned, or the student will be given additional time to complete the misswork before a determination of appropriate grade is made. That was what's in the policy before that was struck out.
Actually, I thought it was more specific than that.
That you wanted to be returned. This is what was in there, that you asked to be returned.
I thought it was more specific. It said, and, I don't remember it that way, but you could be right.
Any further discussion?
Is that uniform across the board?
Yes, it's, if it's, this is the policy you all vote on, yes. Yes, sir.
What I didn't like, is what Mr. Kennington said about allowing schools to come up with their own policies. And, because he's absolutely right, we could end up with 37 different policies.
Sure.
And I, that's, no, no, we can't have that. We, all our students need to be under the same rules regardless of where they go to school.
Right.
So, I, I can't vote for this one tonight, I'll vote for the rest, but I would like spend some more time with this one, and let's look at it again if we can. I mean, it's up to the board how you want to vote, but I'm not...
Well, the motion was to approve...
All of them.
All of them.
Right.
And that was made by Mr. Kelly, and who seconded that?
I did.
Mr. Page?
If someone could make an amendment to remove Policy 4400.
Well, all right, if, if, without, I'd hate to confuse things, but I'm going to make a motion amendment to exclude 4400 for further investigation and consideration.
Second.
So, now we have a motion to amend Mr. Kelly's original motion to approve all the policies presented by Ms. Cooper, Mr. Ribick, and Mr. Armstrong, to exclude Policy 4400 in discussion on that amendment.
I'd just like to ask one quick question. Do we, are students still having a make-up time?
Yes, sir. That was changed when the policy originally changed, when we went to align with the school board association policies. I'll be honest with you, we had a committee that convened probably three, four years ago of teachers, and they were split kind of down the middle as to whether they wanted to continue with that policy. When you hear teachers talk about having to do a lot of paperwork, that was one of the things they talked about, because it's up to the teacher to keep up with. If a kid's missed my class, how have they made their time up? When have they made their time up? What did they do? How many hours do they have? And our teachers complained a lot about that additional paperwork. It put a lot more work on the teacher than it did on the kiddo. Generally speaking, if a student misses your class, and let's say that they're, they've missed your class for 15, 20 days, how that student is passing your class would be amazing to me, because I could not imagine a kid missing my class when I was a teacher for 15 days and still being able to pass that class without the instruction, unless I was giving them a lot of, unless they just didn't even need to be in my class, we'll just put it that way. So, I find it hard to believe that students can pass when they're not there, and if they can, then why?
Ms. Cooper, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, if I may. And, however, you were a principal, and you know how things sometimes are strange. But if we have an ironclad policy that says, "This is what's going to happen," I think that'd take burden off of a teacher. And with the reporting systems we have now, which if teachers are doing what they're supposed to do and record absences of a child, then it's, it's no big deal. And you know as, as well as I, sometimes things get through the cracks. And even though, and there's been an argument in education for a long, long time that says you can miss as many days as you want to, but if you can pass the EOC test, you have accomplished this class. And you know, and I know that that shouldn't be. So, I'd like, I'd like to look at this a little longer if we can, and, and, you know...
That was my point of the question. I'd like to see some discussion of that in this policy that hopefully we pull out.
Remind me who made the amendment to the motion? That was Mr. Howell.
Is there any objection to removing 4400 from being considered?
So, y'all could hear what he said. Is there any objection to removing forty, Policy 4400 from the motion for the consideration?
No objection.
None noted will remove 4400 from the policies that Mr. Kelly has made a motion to approve and was seconded by Mr. Page. Any further discussion?
I would just say that the administration certainly understands what the board is saying and will come back with a revised 4400.
Yes, we'll take that under advisement, work with legal counsel to reach out to some of the other districts, and draft you a more laid-out policy that will accomplish what we're trying to do. And please give it to us without all the, there's so much mark-outs now. Give us a clean, clean policy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting all the policies with the exception of 4400, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous consent to that? And that brings us to the end of our agenda and to our Board Comments section.
I'd like to make a, let me make a comment at this time that I think you could find if you're looking, especially when I think back at the picture that we made at the beginning of this meeting. We've changed some seats, we've shifted some seats around, but the same seven people are here, and the same seven minds will be working together to come up with solutions to our questions, and I think they will be very sound. Thank you. I would echo that, Mr. Chairman, but I also want to thank Mr. Page for being chairman for five and a half years, the job that he has done for this board and this school system. Thank you so much for your service as chairman, and for Mr. Carver and Mr. Kelly. We're behind you, and we support you 100%, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Any other board member comments?
I just want to make a quick comment also. I want to thank Mr. Page. He is personally, when I came on a year ago, mentored me and had some good discussions on things and how things work. And it's, it's different than you think when you start, and I definitely would agree with that. And so, I just want to personally thank you for that and the way you handled some tough crises, tough things as they came along. I also want to say just Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to apologize to Laura Elliott, because I think I came off a little harsh. She did what she was asked to do, and it, Ms. Elliott, if I sounded anything other than appreciative, I apologize for that. I do want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and just remember the reason for the season. I think it's important to remember that.
Yes, sir.
This has been a challenging year. It's a lot of emotion, a lot of feelings. I think that the seven members of this board has done the absolute best we can. And we were reminded that we work for the people, and I know that as well as anyone. And I have spoken with many individuals, I have answered emails from many individuals, and I do try to represent my area as the very best I can. And so, I may disagree with these gentlemen from time to time, but I tell you what, after the vote is over, we're together. And that's the way that we are a team. And I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
That was my only comment, was Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
I believe everybody's, Mr. Kelly, did you get a chance to go? You, you went first, right? All right, I'd just like to say, first of all, just thank you for asking me to be your chairman. It's not a position that I will take lightly. I'll do my very best to represent our vision. Anytime I'm, I'm in a situation where I'm asked to represent the board, not necessarily my own personal opinion, but will do my very best to represent and reflect the wishes of the entire Board of Education. I think we are all, all seven of us, working in unison as best we can to try and create a positive environment for our students, our staff, and for our parents. And so, I think we're unified in that, as Mr. Howell said. I'd also like to thank my family for supporting me as I take on this, this new endeavor and other endeavors in my life, allowing me to have the other endeavors in my life, allowing me to have the flexibility in my schedule and my, to take the phone calls when they come in. So, I, I thank you very much for that and for being supportive of me. I would also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do to get us through every day. There's a lot of days that get, get done where nothing happens. And that's, those are the good days. Those are the good days when we don't make the news, when we don't end up in the paper and we don't end up on Facebook. So, so we'll celebrate that. Dr. James?
Thank you and congratulations, Chairman Carver and Co-Chairman Kelly, for your nominations and elections tonight. I do want to say, my role in all this is to inform the board. You decide, then I have to try to implement your wishes as best possible. So, I think we've worked very well in trying to do that. In very tumultuous times, I will say that we're the second largest employer in Iroh County. And I would challenge anybody to have 2,700 employees and 21,000 students close. To make that happen every day without mistakes or missteps and without input from our constituents. We always are respectful of your opinions. Whether there's one person that wants it one way, there's another person that wants it another way. So, I always say we try to make decisions that impact our students for the positive. And I will tell you that, I think we've said it more than once, we, I think all of us can say that we really don't agree with the exclusion rules as set. We have tried from probably the second week of the toolkit to get it changed. I will say that after, five days after the board, it was taken out of the governor's office and given to local boards. Five days later, you need to do your history. The toolkit was changed. And it wasn't changed to help us. It was tightened up. At that time, we had a gray area when it come to exclusions. So, I'll leave that. And I won't make a political speech about it, but the, the facts are there. But here's some great news. So, our employees, we have put, and this board has put in the last year and a half, over eight and a half million dollars back into the pockets of the people that matter the most. And that's the, the people out in the schools. That's where the rubber meets the road. So, I'm proud to say that we've been able to do that. We've reduced central office by seven positions for a reoccurring cost of about a million dollars a year. We were able to park 15 buses this year for a savings of $300,000 out of our local budget. And so, every time we do that, that's reoccurring money that can be applied towards local stipends to attract teachers, classified workers, et cetera. And like everyone else, we're in a labor crunch. We can't get people to come to work for us. So, we compete with all the counties that are around us that economically can do more than us. But, that said, in the midst of a pandemic out of 116 school systems in the state of North Carolina, we were on, we were on ANDOS HEMs NPR radio last Monday. The conversation was around, how did you guys do so well when other districts didn't? And of course, Charlotte May being the, the other district that was on the call. So, it was in our program. But the conversation, we had the least amount of learning loss than anyone in the state. We actually, category after category, whether it was at-risk students, all ethnicities, diversities, we had, again, the least amount of loss. So, that said, U.S. News and World report just celebrated six of our elementary schools being best schools in the nation. Two of our middle schools were determined to be best schools in the nation. And that goes along with two, and I'm thinking I was, my count may be wrong, three high schools that have received that accolade in the past. So, there's another metric that we use. We look at per pupil funding, economically disadvantaged students, and academic performance. And there's a metric there that is measured by us and other districts in the state. So, I'm happy to say, out of 116 school systems, we ranked seventh in the state, the best ranking we've had, I think, in the history of Iroh Stateful Schools. So, would say that we do need community support. We cannot do this by ourselves. It takes a village. So, we'll send a shout out. We do have a faith-based breakfast or lunch. The next one, I believe, is breakfast. On February 23rd, we invite our faith-based partners out in churches to join us and to have input. It's not just us talking to them. We need input from the community. We also are available to come out and talk about any topic that you would like to, to invite us in. SEL is a hot topic. CRT, we'd be glad to, we've had numerous meetings already over that. Everything we do is on the web. The standards are there. And if you want to inspect lesson plans, by all means, you have that right. We have, I just honestly tell you that when you give some concerns, we've looked at it. We have made adjustments in certain areas where there, there needs to be adjustment. And again, we hope to represent the values of our community. We've lived here all of our life and wouldn't be sitting in this role if it didn't care about kids. But Jims and Gents is one of the organizations that supports us. Speak Life, Men of Valor, Angel Wings, Good News Clubs. And here's what's disheartening, heartening. The Good News Clubs is Western Avenue Baptist Church. Before the pandemic, they were in all of our elementary schools and we're struggling to maintain six now. So, we need the community to come out and help mentor our young people for the future. Power Cross is also a supporter of our students after school. So, again, those faith-based partners and other mentoring organizations throughout the county do help us. Of course, we know athletics and scholastic programs after school help. So, again, thank you for the community for your support and helping us through a difficult year. I know we might not have always agreed on everything. We've tried to keep the board informed. And while I'm not elected, I, I do take an oath of office, as the board members do, to uphold the constitution and North Carolina laws where, like Mr. Howell, I disagree with a lot of things that have been done. And, and again, if everybody wants to use data, we keep saying that the spread inside our buildings is almost nonexistent. So, the data says it's time to change the rules on masking. We've asked for the six-foot rule to go to three foot. CDC said that over a year ago. We have petitioned the state to, to lower that to three feet. That gives us a compromise, even a crowded section, we could have mask. And then, when you sit in your seat, you could take your mask off because you're further than three foot away and you wouldn't get excluded. So, there's, there's things that need to happen at the state level based on the data that we continuously give the state. And we're seeing very slow responses. So, again, I, as the board had said, the, the issue, I think we might be part of the issue in some cases, and we try to adjust. But the biggest issue is everything's legislated and put on our plate. And again, board policy, we have over 375 board policies that are tied directly to general statute. The Elementary and Secondary Education Act, general statute 115(c), 658 pages, that pretty well tell us when we can turn left and when we can turn right. And then, on top of that, we have North Carolina High School Association. We have the Physical Budgeting Act of North Carolina, which is Article 31, another 18, 20 pages. And if, if we make it through a day and, and don't mess up somewhere, it's been a great day. Because I'm not sure what all we do mess up on because of all the laws we're governed by. So, again, we just keep adding bureaucracy on top and expect a different result. And it's just not working for our kids. So, thank you, board, for your leadership, Mr. Page. And I can look forward not to getting phone calls every night from you. I know you'll call me anyway, but to have... Just, just late on Friday night for some reason. Okay, yes, yes. So, I try to make sure I set a time aside for Friday nights for Mr. Page. I'll do that for you, Mr. Carver. So, thank you. I appreciate the work the board's done this year and the staff. I think we've had a successful year. The numbers say it. We've not always agreed with the community. Communities don't always agree with us. But we all want what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one other thing. I forgot to say Merry Christmas to everyone and a Happy New Year to everyone. And I'd like to remind the staff, teachers, employees, that Santa Claus will be arriving for them on Wednesday of this week.
This week or next week?
I thought it's the 15th.
Oh, I think they've already gotten that.
Pardon?
Dr. James, you don't have to worry about me calling you on Friday night because I can assure you that it's date night.
[laughing]
And I will be with my wife.
All right, everybody called as chairman on Friday night. And I, I wanted to just say, Ms. White, we're going to miss you. Congratulations on your retirement. And you're not old enough to retire, Eskel. Anyway, thank you, Ms. White, for everything.
She'll be skiing in no time. She's like, if you'd shut up and get out of here, I'll be skiing tonight, right? Mr. Kelly, it's your turn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We adjourn.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Howell. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Have a good...